2020 and it's 7:00 PM. Tonight, we're in regular session. We'll be reading a series of ordinances. We will also have an executive session at the end of the meeting. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum, and all members of council are present. Next, we have communications from council members. I do have one item that council did receive a notice from Jesse Schmitzer, who is with HAPCAP and the mass transit, and that they are offering free Athens transit with the buses and with Athens On Demand on Election Day. And that being tomorrow, and voting is open from 6:30 in the morning until 7:30 at night in Athens County. Councilmember Crowe, yes?
Thank you, President Isley. I'll just add to that that the Spin E-Scooter Company is also offering a free ride on tomorrow during the election in order to get to the polls in a sustainable manner. Thank you.
Great idea. Communications from other council members. Councilmember Claude Felder.
If you don't mind an election detail, for anyone who might still have an absentee ballot in your possession, today was the deadline to put that in the mail. But you could, you still have two choices. You could go and put it in a drop box tomorrow, or you could vote in person at the polls at your regular polling place. I did, however, this afternoon, notice a sign on Union Street saying that left-hand turns from Union Street onto Court Street tomorrow will be banned past 6 o'clock for anyone who is not an election worker. So if you were planning to put your absentee ballot in the relatively new drop box on Court Street tomorrow, either go earlier in the day, or if your only option is to go after 6:00 PM, you might want to park your car and just go, just walk over there because it doesn't look like you're actually going to be able to drive up to it after 6:00 PM.
Great. Good to have that news. Yes, Councilmember Fall.
And this is along with, this is kind of an announcement communication sort of thing with all the voting that we have done through the whole season and hopefully culminating in tomorrow. I want to say how amazingly awesome the Board of Elections has been and how much they've worked with all the craziness that we have seen all over the place. And they, you know, people are really, really happy and they're quite proud of the fact that elections are on. And when you have somebody badmouthing it from the top top, that doesn't, you know, that's not the truth. Our Board of Election people work super hard. So I just want to say thank you and get everybody out to vote. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Any other communications from council members? We'll move on to elected officials. Law Director Eliason.
No communication.
Okay. Mayor Patterson.
I mute myself. A few things I'd like to share with council and viewing audience tonight. First off, the Athena Award Ceremony will be virtual Wednesday, November 4th, at 5:00 PM, where people can tune in and watch the ceremony and also find out who this year's recipient of the 2020 Athena Award will be, who it is. The HAPCAP and the Ohio University Credit Union is announcing a Athens County micro loan program. Eligible expenses for this program for up to $1,500 is car repair on a vehicle owned and insured by the applicant, paying off a payday or car title loan, home repair on an applicant-owned home, medical expenses not covered by insurance, one-time educational or certificate expenses, or deposit for a home or an apartment. If anyone's interested, you are encouraged to reach out to HAPCAP Community Resource Navigator at 740-767-4500 and get more details on that. A couple other things to share. We are looking for people who live in the community and wanting to volunteer their time to be part of one of our many boards and commissions. Most notably, the Disabilities Commission has two vacancies, currently has two vacancies. The Joint Police Advisory Council has three vacancies. One is for a victim's advocate. Another one is for someone in our commuter community, and then someone representing a neighborhood association. So those ones, oh, and there's one more to share, and that is the Shade Tree Commission has a vacancy. As council has already authorized, John Kautowski has moved from the Shade Tree Commission onto the Planning Commission. So with that movement, there is a vacancy on Shade Tree if anybody's interested in participating in one of the many, many city boards and commissions.
Mayor Patterson? Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the Arts, Parks, and Rec Board also has an opening right now.
They do, but we have someone who has thrown their name in the hat and is interested in serving that capacity, which that would be coming before council likely at the next regular session.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The final thing that I have is that Chief Tom Pyle, Acting Service Safety Director, and I have been engaged in the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, kind of a task force in looking at Police Reform Support, Police Reform Support Network is what the group is called, working with the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, with Executive Director Kerry McCarthy. We had, I think, a very informative meeting today, and we have had many, up to this point in time, and we'll have many more as we look at things in which we can continually improving ourselves when it comes to police reform. And then on that, I would be remiss not to share with council that President Isley, Acting Service Safety Director Tom Pyle, and I have been working on what will hopefully become a new commission for the City of Athens, the Athens City Commission on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And we still have a long ways to go on that particular committee or commission as we're fleshing things out and making sure that we come forward with an appropriate charge for such a commission. But we have been making a fair amount of headway. We are reaching out to other organizations to also look, in particular, the National League of Cities Racial Equity and Leadership with Leon Andrews, as well as some other groups that work in this world. So hopefully, we'll have something that we can bring before council. I'd like to do it before the end of the year, but the end of the year is approaching rather quickly. So more to come on that as President Isley, again, and the Acting Service Safety Director Tom Pyle and myself have been working on this and, again, made a lot of headway in what this has become, and we'll certainly make sure that the law director has eyes on and before it comes before council. So soon, soon to come, I hope.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now move on to ordinances for third reading. 11120 is an ordinance accepting the plot of the Harold Avenue Commercial Subdivision and is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. My move that we adopt 11120?
Second.
Thank you.
Second from Councilmember Claude Felder.
This particular ordinance has been before some type of public body for numerous readings and hearings. It's identified an area that could be changed into a manufacturing area and asking for some right of ways so that there's better access to that particular area. So, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval. Do we have any comments or questions from council members or administration? And any comments or questions from the public? I'll check our attendees list to make sure. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11520 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05 Parking Regulations, Section 7.05.13 Impounding of Vehicles, and this is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 011520.
Okay.
Second from Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you. And so this, once again, to remind everybody, this would change impound lots not being required to be located within the city limits. Instead, it would tie us to a five-mile radius around the city.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval of 11520, and I see that we have a comment from Councilmember Fall and then Councilmember Claude Felder.
Right. At one point, when we first talked about this in committee, or it might have been the first introduction, I think I kind of got the idea that there may be something about public transportation being available to the specific site or something like that because my concern with five miles is that these are extraordinarily dangerous roads. And if there is no available HAPCAP or whatever, is that they're either going to be walking or riding a scooter. Now, I know the scooters can't go out of town, but you get my meaning. Thank you.
Okay. And Councilmember Claude Felder, and then Councilmember Snedley.
My comment is very similar to Councilmember Falls. I know that Athens On Demand was mentioned as a good transportation alternative for folks whose cars were towed since we no longer have private cab service. I looked up a little information on Athens On Demand, and it stops running at 7:30 in the evening. So I still feel like there wouldn't be any form of public transportation available at the times when, at night, when I think a lot of people get towed, or they come out of a party or a bar and find their car gone. And I really would worry about people who, for some reason or another, felt like they had to go get their car that night, either getting a ride with somebody who was intoxicated or trying to walk on, you know, dark roads for miles at night. It's just, there are too many negative possibilities with that scenario, I think. So I do still have some concerns about this proposal.
Yes, Councilmember Kotzis.
Are towing lots open 24 hours? I don't know if you'd really have the ability to retrieve your vehicle the same evening as it gets towed.
And in addition, I don't think the bus system, even if it was on the route to get there, runs past, what is it, 10 o'clock at night? So that's, you know, even if you had it on a route, you still don't have that option after, you know, later at night. To Councilmember Snedley, did you have a comment earlier or?
Yes, thank you, President Isley. I was going to bring up what you mentioned, which is that even if it were on a bus route, you are limited based on their timing. And also to remind everyone that we do still have cab services that run later into the evening, and also we have Lyft, which is another option that runs later into the evening. And that would be an option for anyone who would need to retrieve their vehicle, even if it were still within the geographic area that we were talking, that prior to the creation of this ordinance. So those all are options, whether or not we pass this ordinance. And so I don't know that the concerns that were brought up would necessarily prevent us from passing this ordinance right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Claude Felder.
I guess I have a question now after Member Kotzis' good comment. I think it would be important to know how late the towing companies are open, I think, as we consider this, so that we could take into account transportation options and what kind of alternatives people would be facing if their cars were towed.
I'm not aware that we have that information available and this is our reading tonight.
I would prefer to have it before we vote myself, but maybe that's just me.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Kotzis.
And I will mention that, I mean, if, you know, HAPCAP exists right now with an On-Demand Transit, if that changed, I think that we would, it would be, it'd be good to revisit this then at that point.
Councilmember Grace.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in because I was one of the members who originally brought up the concern about being accessible to public transportation. And Councilmember Kotzis did do some research and reached out to me, and we had a conversation about, you know, the availability of On-Demand. And also that, while right now, we're very fortunate to have some bus routes that do go out into the county, we can't necessarily say where those would be in the future and what would be on a bus line that is running in rural areas. And so to make it a requirement that a business be within a certain distance of public transportation in an area as rural as ours would really be a hardship with the unpredictability of public transportation. But I do think that the Athens On Demand could definitely serve that purpose. And just currently, two of the tow companies are closed and will open at 8:00 AM tomorrow, and one is open 24 hours. So just from Googling, two of the tow companies in town are already closed at 7:00 PM, based on a Google search of the local tow companies, if that answers the question. So I don't believe that we could, that you could retrieve your vehicle after the transportation options are closed.
Yeah. Councilmember Claude Felder.
I just did the same Google search, and thank you for sharing that. But there is one that runs 24 hours a day, and I think that, just that one company should make us think about this really carefully.
Councilmember Fall.
I understand the reason behind this, and I agree, you know, one of the impound lots is in our wellhead protection zone. I think what we really are talking about is some justice because I think that we don't think enough about when, as a society, we penalize somebody. And that's what these people are getting, you know, they broke the law, but then it's also people who tend to be, in our population, either young or people who, you know, have our harder time being able to do things. And I think that's why we're having this conversation, and I think that's why it's important to be able to think about those issues because going forward, you know, it will impact people, and it's probably going to be impacting people who are more at risk. So that's why I wanted to bring it up from when we had a discussion about people's uneasiness about it, and we didn't really discuss it all the way. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments amongst council members or administration? Okay, and I will do a double check of our attendees to make sure whether or not there's a comment or a question from them, but I'm not seeing any. All right, so we'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Thank you, and thanks for the discussion. Ordinance 11720 is an ordinance establishing a complete streets policy for the City of Athens and is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, I'd like to make a motion to amend Ordinance 011720.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Crowe.
And this was loaded up onto the drive a little bit earlier today. So basically, I am making a request to add an additional bullet point to page four, and that request in the quantitative performance measures will then now include an additional point which would enumerate each project, each city project that is exempted from the complete streets policy. Documentation would need to be included with project name and number, date, and also citing the reason for the exemption for that specific project with the complete streets policy.
And, yes, so we have a motion and second, and now comments. Councilmember Crowe.
Thank you, President Isley. Thank you, Mayor Kotzis, for updating this ordinance. I would just say that when we spoke, last spoke on this, I believe at the October 5th meeting, the lack of a reporting mechanism within this ordinance was what I objected to, and the Member Kotzis' amendment for the ordinance satisfies my concern moving forward. Thank you, Member Kotzis.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from council members or administration? Okay, and any comments or questions from our attendees tonight?
Yes, there is one in chat.
Okay, yes. Mr. Delak. Yes, and if you would state your name and address and whether or not you represent a group, and then you will have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Rob Delak. I live at 124 Morris Avenue in the City of Athens, and I do not represent any groups as I'm talking to you tonight. I just want to confirm that I agree with the amendment as proposed and think this is a good modification. As I stated last time we discussed this, my concern was the reporting issue and accountability, and this will make it so that the city has to report the exceptions and make that information available so that that serves the purpose of what I think was missing from the policy. And I'm happy to support it now. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And I don't see any other comments in the chat or any other attendees whose hands are raised, so we have a motion and second for amending this ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay. The motion for amending carries, and the ordinance has now been read for the first Ordinance 11920 is an ordinance establishing guidelines for approval and installation of temporary sidewalk extensions called park foots for use by the general public at appropriate locations within the public rights of way and amending Athens City Code Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 11.06 Miscellaneous Business Regulations, Section 11.06.02 Exceptions. This is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you. Now I'd like to make a motion to adopt 011920.
Seconded by Councilmember Fall.
Okay, and thank you. And so this is changing our pilot program, well, no, this is, it's not changing the pilot program. It is introducing, making the pilot program, which we did have, an actual part of our code, part of our city, and giving us the opportunity that businesses can participate in this next year and beyond in adding additional outdoor seating in the uptown area in parking spaces.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Are there any other comments or questions from council members or administration? And any comments from our attendees tonight? I'm not seeing any in the list or the chat. All right. All those in favor signify by saying, oh, did, Councilmember Reisner, did I see your hand raised? No? Okay.
He's just jumping the gun.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Thank you. We now have ordinances for second reading, and due to time constrictions on some of these, some of these will be suspended tonight on the second reading. Oh, no, excuse me, not on the second, there is, the ordinance is for first reading. So the ordinance is for second reading tonight. I will read the title, see briefly if there are any comments or questions. Ordinance 12220 is an ordinance authorizing construction and construction engineering of the dewatering facilities at the wastewater treatment plant, which is project number 320, and is introduced by Councilmember Grace. If no comments or questions, I will move on to ordinance 12520, an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to John Hanson, owner at 110 Morris Avenue, to allow a fence. And this is introduced by Councilmember Fall. And if no comments or questions, we will move on then to our ordinances for first reading, and these are, contain several that we will be suspending tonight. Ordinance 12720 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to Hocking River Development, owner 26 East Park Drive, to allow directional signage for Marietta Memorial Hospital, Athens Department of Primary Care, and is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. Just as the title of this says, this is just like also the ordinance granting a special right-of-way for the fence on Morris Avenue. These are good for seven years, and then they will have to be reapplied. Thank you.
All right. And if no comments or questions, we'll move on to 12820, which is an ordinance granting special right-of-way permit to Hocking River Development, owner 26 East Park Drive, to allow directional signage for Marietta Memorial Hospital, Athens Department of Primary Care, at the intersection of East State Street and East Park Drive, and is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. Once again, it's special right-of-way. Some council members may remember this when it was brought forward before, when the building was a different, under different management, but the same sort of idea. It's also going to have signage that has city, the city-state, the city facilities that also go down that way, so it helps the city. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. If no comments or questions, I will move on to ordinance 12920, and this is an ordinance implementing a plan for interim city engineer and director of engineering and public works and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowe.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 012920.
Second. Second by Councilmember Claude Felder.
Thank you. This is to compensate our interim EPW director for the job that she has been doing and the job that she is doing. And we discussed this at council, and since she's been in this position since the very end of September, we wanted to pay her as soon as possible for the job that she is doing.
Okay. And so that's the reason we're suspending then tonight.
Correct. I'd like, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept 012920.
Let's do the vote on suspending.
Sorry. I had it myself.
So all those in favor of suspending the rules for 12920, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Now the rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowe.
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to make a motion to approve 012920.
Second. Second by Councilmember Snedley. And any other, any comments or questions on this ordinance? Mayor Patterson.
Member Crowe, I really appreciate your enthusiasm to get this through without suspending it first. You know, this is, this pay is well warranted for the individual taking on the role of engineering and public works with all, which all of council members, you all understand the breadth and scope of that particular department, and to have Jessica Dine take the helm, which she is more than capable of doing, I think that this is important that she receives the pay commensurate with taking on this level of responsibility. So I'm encouraging council to please So I'm encouraging council to please pass this in full and to get it through to where we can keep things rolling down there at Engineering and Public Works.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second for approval. Any final comments or questions? If not, then all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 13020 is an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance and authorizing the auditor to make interfund transfers. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'll go ahead and read this ordinance. The 2020 appropriation ordinance 13019 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $23,000 to the Judges' Computer Fund, 230, transaction code 600 for transfer. This is simply the grant that they received from the Ohio Supreme Court. And in order to spend this, they need it in the transferred into the Clerk's fund instead of the Judges' fund. So it's just an interfund or inner-city transfer. And then also, $2,881.81 to CDBG Fund, 248, transaction code 600 for transfer and increasing the total appropriations by set amounts. This is at the request of the Auditor's Office to, and the state auditor, to make sure that we are applying the administrative portions of the CDBG to the individual departments within the city. So this is also just an administrative transfer. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on this? We'll move on to ordinance 13120. And this is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a new base radio system for the Athens Police Department, amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for this ordinance, please.
And we have a second from Councilmember Claude Filter.
Thank you. And the reason that we are requesting this suspension this evening is because the current base radio system at the police department is failing and we cannot repair it. So time is is important here. It will take several weeks from the time that the new system is ordered before it could be up and running. And we we don't want our law enforcement team to be without a a base radio for communication needs.
So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. And now I would like to make a motion that we adopt this ordinance.
And a second from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. And this, as we talked about last week in committee, and then as very briefly just summarized, our Athens Police Department has been working with the same base radio station since the 90s, I believe. And it is quite outdated and is failing and no longer able to get parts to repair it. So I will read the ordinance. Whereas the current police department's base radio system is failing, and whereas this equipment can be purchased through a GSA and state bid, therefore competitive bidding is not required. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, Section 1, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to purchase a replacement base radio system for the Athens Police Department. Section 2, the 2020 appropriation ordinance 13019 is hereby amended by decreasing General Fund Police 101.207 TC 100 Personnel Services by $112,000 and increasing General Fund Police 101.207 TC 500 Capital Outlay by $112,000 and decreasing and increasing the total appropriations by set amount. Section 3, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $112,000 from General Fund Police 101.207 for set equipment, and this ordinance shall be an emergency measure.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of this. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 13220 is an ordinance suspending Athens City Code, Section 7.05.03, continuous parking in the same location from Sunday, December 15, 2019 through midnight on Wednesday, January 1, 2020, introduced by Councilmember Kotsas.
President Isley, thank you. And and I just, and I noticed this during the meeting. The dates are incorrect on the agenda. They are correct on the ordinance. Would you like to reread it from the ordinance? Or should I just go forward?
You can reread it from the ordinance if you'd like to. It's a year off.
It is, yeah. We're in the Wayback Machine right now.
Okay.
Okay, Sherman.
Well, thank you. Showing my age. So actually, let's, right now, I would like to make a motion to suspend ordinance 13220.
Okay, and we'll, and we'll, yes, and we have a second from Councilmember Claude Filter. Okay, and the reason being?
Reason being that this needs to be in effect on December 13. And our next, our next council meeting is November 16, which wouldn't give us the 30 days to allow this to come into effect when we need it to to happen.
Thanks. And all those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, the rules have been suspended, Councilmember Kotsas.
President Isley, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 013220.
Okay.
Second.
From Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. And I will read the the beginning of this ordinance. This is an ordinance suspending the Athens City Code, Section 7.05.03, continuous parking in the same location from Sunday, December 13, 2020 through midnight on Wednesday, January 1, 2021. This is a, an annual suspension of our 24-hour parking rule that allows people to not have to worry about this during the the holiday season.
Okay. All right, and we, it looks like we have a comment from Councilmember Crowell, yes.
Thank you, President Isley. Thank you, Mr. Kotsas. There is more than a year issue with the dates. December 31 is a Thursday. The 1st is a Friday. So there's a few other things there in the agenda we're going to have to get correct. I mean, in the ordinance.
Is it in the ordinance itself that the like, that the date?
Yes, it says midnight on Wednesday, January 1, but Wednesday is not January 1.
So that's Friday, January 1.
Correct.
Thank you.
About Sunday.
Thank you for noting that. Okay.
Sunday is the 13th.
Okay, and yeah, Sunday, the 13th, and actually, Section 1 actually says midnight on Saturday, January 2. So are we? Sunday, January 2. Is this, is this in correlation then? Is that, is the? Yeah, which is actually Sunday, January 3, 2021.
Correct.
What date are we looking for, folks, so I can amend?
Need some guidance here.
Yes.
If we're willing to give people until January 3, that would give them a weekend after they get back in town perhaps to just kind of relax a little bit before they have to move their cars.
Let's, let's give just a moment for Debbie, our clerk of council, to double check for us. She's our.
And somebody just pointed out that the holiday for the OU people doesn't stop until the 5th. So that might make, that might be the most logical day.
Mayor Patterson.
Holiday for which OU people?
Somebody had it in the chat. So look in the chat.
It's the furlough. It's for staff. Students aren't back until like the 18th.
That's correct. I didn't know if you were talking about.
Right. No, I was just pointing out that somebody was asking about it in the chat. So.
Okay. So maybe we could amend, as long as we're amending to correct the dates, we could also amend that then through the January 5. Does that seem like it's agreeable to council members? So we've got three things to do. Well, you've already suspended.
What is the, excuse me, what is the problem with December 13?
There's no problem with the 13th.
Okay, so that's all right.
It's all on the tail end.
Which day are we concerned about?
Well, the, in the, in the title itself, it says Wednesday, January 1, which is not a Wednesday. It is a Friday. And then in Section 1.
Okay, it should be January 2.
Should be January 2. Saturday, January 2, which is not. Which is, that is correct in its date.
And I also noticed in the title, it says Sunday, December 15. When it says Sunday, December 13.
So we do want to amend to correct the date in the title. And then are we wanting to? You said that the language says the 2nd, and are we wanting to amend it through the 5th? To end through the 5th or not? Councilmember Snedley.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd be in support of extending it to the 5th.
Okay, so what we need to do is have an amend. We're going to amend it, then we're going to suspend again, and then we'll approve.
Okay.
So you could do the amend to correct the dates and then, yeah.
Okay, so so even though it's on on the floor right now, I can, I can make a motion to amend? Or?
What do we, we have on the floor right now a motion to suspend the rules.
We had, we've approved that. We had on the floor a motion to approve. We had a motion.
Go ahead and vote on that and then make a motion to. When he made the motion to adopt, we'll make the motion to amend. Since we already have it on the floor, the motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, so we can take the vote now on approving.
No, that only to suspend.
No, we already, we're not ending.
We already suspended, and then I put a motion forward to approve, and we have a second.
Okay, so probably that should be withdrawn and make the motion to amend.
Got it.
So President, President Isley, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw ordinance 13220.
Okay, and do we have, we have a second for that with Councilmember?
All right, thank you.
And.
Actually, his motion to adopt at that point, he's withdrawing that.
Right.
Adopt.
Right, that's correct. And we do need to take a motion, a vote on the motion to withdraw, correct?
Yes, let's go ahead and do that.
So all those in favor signify to on the motion to withdraw this current motion to approve, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, opposed, nay. Okay, we have the, this particular version has been, now been withdrawn. The motion to approve has been withdrawn. So now you can amend, suspend, and approve.
Okay, President Isley, I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance 13220.
Second.
Okay, second, Councilmember Crowell, and you are amending it to reflect the corrected dates.
The corrected date, which is the, which would be from Sunday, December 13, 2020, through January 5, Tuesday, January 5, 2021. And the same, same times will will still apply.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for amending. And I will check. I don't think there's any for discussion, but there, there is that option if you would want. All right, so we have the motion and second for amending. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, the rules have been suspended and the ordinance has been read for the first time.
President Isley, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 013220.
Let's, we need to.
I need to suspend again, right? Okay. President Isley, I'd like to make a motion to suspend ordinance 013220.
Second.
All right, we have a second from Councilmember Crowell. All those in favor for suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the rules have been suspended. Councilmember Kotsas, you're there. You're on the last leg.
Yes, thank you. This is like Groundhog Day. President Isley, I'd love to make a motion to adopt 013220 and just put this thing to bed.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Fall. All right, we now have a motion and second to approve. Any other comments? Okay, thank everyone for their patience. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Thanks. Thanks for working it through us that.
It's not as easy as it looks sometimes.
No, it's not. Okay. We now have ordinance 13320. This ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to suspend temporarily the fee for parking at metered spaces in the municipal parking garage and on-street metered parking, introduced by Councilmember Kotsas.
President Isley, thank you. I'm going to sound so difficult. I would like to make a motion to amend 013320 this evening.
All right, and the purpose for your amending?
This, this ordinance needs an emergency clause because of the start date of 11 November 28.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'm sorry. Councilmember Grace, okay. A second from Councilmember Grace, and then for amending, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, the ordinance has been amended, Councilmember Kotsas.
Thank you.
And.
We can let that go to the second read. Is that correct?
Yeah, we can go to the second read on that one.
All right.
Okay, next one is 13420, and this is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs for Issue 1 funds to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Kotsas.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 013420.
We have a second, Councilmember Snedley, and the reason for suspension?
The, the grant deadline is November 6, four days away.
Okay. We have a motion and second now for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Kotsas.
President Isley, I would love to make a motion to adopt 013420.
Okay, and we have a second, Councilmember Claude Filter.
And just, just to remind everybody, we spoke at this at Council Transportation Committee last week. This is a, a grant applying for for some transportation enhancements, sidewalks, and pedestrian elements on the west side of Athens.
Okay, so we have a motion and second for approval. Any other comments or questions from council members or administration? Or our attendees? Not seen any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Yes, you had a comment. I'm sorry, Councilmember Crowell, yes. Yes.
I just noticed that a citizen had asked to comment on 013220. I don't know if it's too late to go back. But Mr. Delak had requested to comment.
Did we answer his question, perhaps, on the furlough? Let me.
It is possible that we did, but he did ask.
Right. Mr. Delak, are you still there?
Oh, he says his suggestion was adopted, so we're good.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Oh, yes, I see it now. Okay, you're quicker than I am on reading these things. And thanks for seeing that also. We next have a one-reading resolution. This is our 1320. And this is a resolution expressing Athens City Council's support for HR 763, the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act of 2019, which, if enacted, would impose a carbon fee on the producers or importers of fuels that emit greenhouse gases into the atmosphere, and urging representatives in the United States Congress to enact it into law. And this is introduced by all members of council. I will, if it, if it's admissible by council members, I will read through, not the entirety by word for word, but I will summarize the different points in the wherethes. And then the summary for our encouragingness. And the wherethes talk about the climate scientists worldwide are in near-unanimous agreement that the planet is warming, that there's an overwhelming majority of residents who oppose climate-threatening practices within the city of Athens, that there's human activity that is a significant contributor to global warming, and that the city of Athens has experienced steadily increasing numbers of heavy rainfall events over the past decade. And this has caused localized flooding and landslides. And then perhaps one of the most important wherethes for the city of Athens particularly points to the legislation that we have enacted over the years, beginning in 1984, with our move to, for curbside recycling, a resolution in 2007 to reduce global warming emissions, an ordinance in 2009 that established a green fleet policy, a resolution in '09 to facilitate installation of a photovoltaic solar energy system at the community center, and an ordinance in 2011, adopting a green building design standards for municipal property, an ordinance in 2012 establishing the city's Environmental and Sustainability Commission, an ordinance in 2016 authorizing solar-powered recycling refuse compacting containers, a resolution in 2017 expressing the city's commitment to reducing greenhouse house gas emissions through the implementation of a climate action plan, 2017, a bronze designation from Soul Smart. In 2018, we had an ordinance authorizing an opt-out community solar program with an electric carbon fee. And then in resolution in 2020, endorsing the declaration of a climate emergency and emergency mobilization to restore a safe climate, then also establishing curbside composting in 2020, and another resolution to include solar energy systems in the zoning code. And I might just make an aside on this. We're, we're reading this. I really want to thank council members here and some who have served in the past also, who have been instrumental in moving these forward. And I think, really think it's a proud, a proud history. So I want to thank all of you personally. There is another wherethes that talks about the introduction of this, this federal resolution in the House of Representatives. It was first introduced on January 24th, 2019. And then says the different things that this revenue-neutral carbon fee and dividend would do. It would motivate people. It would employ a market approach to encourage innovative processes. It would levy a fee at the point of production. It would incentivize the development and use of alternative energies. And it would make it equitable for all businesses. And it would also include a border adjustment fee on goods traded. And so we then resolve that the council hereby expresses its support for this dividend act, which, if enacted, would endorse the carbon fee and dividend. And then instructs us to send copies of this legislation to our president and vice president and Governor Dewine, and senators Portman and Brown, and Representative Johnson, and state senators Hoagland and Edwards. And are there comments from council members? Yes. I see a thumbs up. We do need, we do need a, a motion to approve. So if one of you council members would please make a motion to approve. Councilmember Fall.
I make a motion that we approve our 1320.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Claude Filter. And then any comments? Mayor Patterson. And then Mayor, and then Councilmember Reisner.
So, President Nicely, I believe that that resolution summarizes everything that the city of Athens has done, but there is so, so much more. We have charging, EV charging stations, a fast charge charging station down at the community center. We have L2s in the parking garage. We have pushed the envelope to where we are going to be one of two sites in the state of Ohio to have a microgrid system for resilience at our water treatment plant in case of emergency or otherwise. We have the carbon fee, as what was mentioned already, which the citizens of Athens voted unanimously. By that, I say 76% in favor of a carbon fee. Council is also authorized, in one of your more recent pieces of legislation, to have a, a TIF, a neighborhood TIF. And part of the language in that TIF was to make sure that there is energy efficiencies in what was being built with affordable housing. So, and I could go on and on and on. I, I have already let my name to the list of other prominent officials by signing on. So I'm encouraging council to also sign on because tomorrow is a big day. Nationwide, tomorrow is a big day. And it's always important to make sure that we keep legislation that could sunset at the end of this year, to keep it alive in case things go in a slightly different direction. But regardless, it's our commitment to making sure that we are, making sure that we are leaving behind an environment that is better than we took it on as citizens, as adults, as parents, as grandparents. Because that is what humankind is all about. Making sure that we are doing better for our kin as we move forward in this really interesting time.
And other comments from council members? Or anybody else?
That says it all.
Okay. All right. We have the motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And the resolution is approved. We now have announcements and other business. If I could have a motion for accepting the September 2020 financial reports?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Reisner, seconded by Councilmember Fall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, those reports have been accepted. The next one is a motion to accept the September 2020 credit card transactions.
So moved.
With Councilmember Crowell and seconded by Councilmember Fall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Okay, those have been approved. And now, Councilmember Grace, I believe you have some Affordable Housing Commission appointments?
Yes, thank you, President Nicely. The Affordable Housing Commission currently has two vacancies. And we are fortunate enough to have two outstanding volunteers willing to fill those vacancies. These are both unexpired terms that, so that the new appointees will serve until 6/30 of '21, and then have, have the option of being reappointed following that. The first is Molly Fitzgerald, and she is the new executive director at the Athens County Economic Development Council. And she is very active here in Athens. And she was previously the assistant director at the Economic Development Council. And before that, served as the executive director of the Live Healthy Appalachia. And so her perspective and input will be a great help on the Affordable Housing Commission. And second, I would like to bring forward Hannah Gilkey. Hannah is the branch manager at the Port Street People's Bank. And she is a lifelong Athens resident who, after finishing at Ohio University, wanted to stay here and is committed to, to working to serve this Athens community. And she is willing to serve in the role of representing and, and bring her, her knowledge of banking and financing to the commission. So I would like to make a motion that we accept the service of Molly Fitzgerald and Hannah Gilkey.
Second. Seconded by Councilmember Claude Filter. All right. Motion and second for approving Molly Fitzgerald and Hannah Gilkey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries, and we thank them for their service that they have been doing and, and will continue as now as members on the Affordable Housing Commission. We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services. Wait a minute, I want to do one more thing. I want to back up. Are there any other announcements other than our usual? Next week will be a council committee meeting night. And so council members, who are chairs of the different committees, should make sure to get their agenda items to Clerk of Counsel Debbie Walker by Wednesday of this week. And any other announcements? Yes, Councilmember Claude Filter.
Just please go vote tomorrow.
It's an important one. Okay. All right. Now we do have the opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Is there anyone amongst the attendees who would want to speak for three minutes? If not, then tonight, we have a little bit different ending to the meeting. It's about 8:04, so. 8:05, so 15 minutes, 8:20. So what we would now have is a motion to enter into executive session at 8:20 tonight. So that will be 15 minutes from now. And so if I could have a motion and, yes, from Councilmember Grace.